I'd like to call the meeting to order of the Avalon City Council and to include a meeting of the Avalon Municipal Hospital Board of Trustees for August 2nd. May we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Place your hand over your heart and begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we will forego the invocation today. Announcements?
I'm going to do roll, Mayor.
Oh, yes, let's take the roll call.
Councilmember Cassidy here. Councilmember Hernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Sampson.
Here.
Mayor Protim Olson.
Here.
And Mayor Marshall.
Here, partially. Announcements?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Adeline Young with Southern California Edison. I want to thank Councilmember Cindy Cassidy for bringing this issue to our attention. I'm going to talk about utility scams and how to avoid becoming a victim this evening. So I understand that several Avalon residents and businesses have been contacted by impostors telling them they must make immediate payment on past due bills or have their electric service disconnected. As of the end of June of this year, over 3,600 Southern California Edison customers have reported receiving some scam calls and unfortunately about 228 have fallen victim to this and they've lost nearly $228,000. We have actually noticed a spike in scam calls since May and it's, I was told it was about 1,500 calls a month. So that, there's a lot of these going on. So typically the scammers would call and they would pose as utility collection employees and they would threaten to cut off your power unless a payment is made immediately, either using a prepaid cash card or a prepaid debit card. So this is a scam and we just want to make sure that you don't fall victim to it. So remember that Edison will never call to demand immediate payment with a threat of service discontinuation. We do not have a disconnection department. We do not accept prepaid cash cards for bill payments, ever. An Edison employee will never ask for cash in person and we never conduct credit transactions on weekends or holidays. If you do suspect that you've been, you're receiving a fraudulent call, email, or personal visit, don't ever reveal personal information about your Edison account information, credit card, ATM, or calling card number, or the PIN number. Never use the callback number provided by an unknown caller to verify billing information. Ask for the caller's name, department, and business phone number and then end the call or interaction, report the incident to your local law enforcement. You can call us at 800-367-8851 or the number on your utility bill. I've also left some flyers on how to avoid scams with some of this information. It's in both English and Spanish, so you know, there's additional information there as well, too. And thank you for your time.
Great, thank you very much.
Good evening. For those who don't know me, I'm the newly hired Community Services Director for the city of Avalon. Thank you for having me, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Just a couple of updates. Staging, we started our staging for Joe Machado Field. If you've seen that here yesterday or today, some of the material is coming in, the infill material is coming in, the matting is coming in. We are looking for a tentative start date of August 15th to get that project underway and it's got a 60-day window on it, so our hope is to have it completed by mid-October and kickoff possibly the 21st, 22nd. We envision maybe an all-sports kind of a weekend with lots of activities for families, adults, kids, teens, to get that underway. We will be back in two weeks, the department will be back in two weeks for two updates. The Mall Park Plan, having some discussion in regards to that, and then the Fit Trail and where that stands. So we look forward to making that presentation to you in two weeks. Just briefly, today, the Public Works Director was kind enough to loan me one of his staff. So we're a staff of three, full-time and two part-time now, so we're growing, to assist in spit-shining the bathrooms. It was a kind of a major concern of mine, a priority of mine, to get the bathrooms and the parks up to, I think, a standard that the Avalon community would like to see. So got out there with him today and we went through the parks and we'll continue to do that on a daily basis and I think the community will see that, see those changes here right off the bat. Last two, we're meeting with a group of teens I'm really excited about. We're going to possibly look into starting a teen advisory committee that will help us in some of our events that we're doing as a volunteer staff, possibly look for opportunities to employ staff down the road as we mentor them, assist with our festivals and those types of things. And then lastly, probably by the end of the day tomorrow, we should start to see some things on the website get updated in terms of the recreational programs that we are offering, what's kind of coming down the pike, and some of the updates on where we are with some of these projects. Thank you.
And let me ask a question, and maybe Cindy could even answer this question, but that water bottle filling machine on the Mall that has been gone, what happened to that?
It's in process, in repair, over town. So yeah, it's, that was a gift and sponsorship from the Rotary Club of Avalon and so Rotary has been instrumental in working with city staff to send that over town for repairs and...
Okay, I just noticed it today, thank you. Great report, thank you.
Yeah, great report, thank you.
Any other announcements? Bent Communications?
I have none.
Okay. City Manager report?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, good evening. Just a few things to touch on. First, the city has written letters, as you know, to state grant funding and regulatory agencies. You've heard me report on that before. We did today complete a letter to the Los Angeles Regional Water Quality Control Board asking for their continued assistance and help and support when you seek federal and state funds. We will be undertaking a business condition survey of all businesses in Avalon to determine their status, the number of employees, the kinds of issues and concerns that they have in regard to whether it be at the local, state, or federal level. We're also tasked staff, our staff, to take a look and examine grant opportunities for a variety of, from affordable housing and business repair, government programs for solar energy, electric vehicles, water quality, waste to energy, water and wastewater improvements, fund for the Mall, reconstruction of the seawall, Pebley Beach, permanent improvements, and economic development. We believe that there are funds at the federal level and state level, maybe not all at once, but we will be pursuing that. And I wanted to just mention one thing that came up at a previous meeting and has come up with a couple, had a couple subsequent meetings that I've had. There was a question raised about the authority of the city to authorize the allocation of water inside the city limits. And after some consultation with the city attorney and that the city council has the authority to determine whether water allocations are made. The city council does not make the allocations, but you can decide whether allocations can be made. And this is essentially vested in the city's police powers under Article 11, Section 7 of the California Constitution, and it's enabled through your general plan. So that answers that question. And now to a more hands-on, real situation. As we speak, the contractor at the museum is, has removed the fence back and is now leveling the area so that it'll at least be passable for pedestrians, for people who are disabled, for anyone. And that work is literally underway at this moment. So that's my report, Madam Mayor.
To the left of the museum?
Yes.
And that's the Rifkin property?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
That's city property, right? Sidewalk.
Sidewalk.
Oh, sidewalk, yeah.
Yes, it is a sidewalk property.
All right. Great, well, thank you for that information on water. That gives us...
Madam Mayor, may I?
Please.
We will need to bring back, I assume, some enabling language through ordinance that will give you that, enable you to use your powers under the police power and with your permission, we'll speak with the city attorney and we'll bring something back soon.
Absolutely.
Is that something that would typically come through the Planning Commission, then?
No, this, well...
Because that means we would be looking at every project prior, so would that probably...
Yeah, you could certainly delegate on either an advisory basis or on where it, you could delegate authority to do that or you could ask them for their advice. But you raise a good point, do you want to, as a council, be doing, or do you want to have some guidelines that maybe we could use to do that at a staff level? It could be...
Do we, do we have a planning director here tonight?
No.
No, there was a family issue that she asked if she...
And the reason I'm asking that is because I was hoping for clarification. It's my understanding that we will not be doing any water allocations or projects moving forward that require a water allocation as long as we're in any phased rationing. And it may be Phase 2, it may only start at Phase 2 rationing, but I believe that there's some rules regarding allocation at Phase 1 as well.
Yes. Yes, and I think that is the issue because there might be an agency that says, okay, we're in Phase 1 and so we can allocate water. However, there might be another way of thinking that if the long-term water solution isn't made or whatever our justification be, that maybe something not happened as well.
Mayor, I know the city attorney probably wants to, and let me just, I am familiar with cities in California, even prior to a drought, that have enacted growth, their growth management and what, and the purpose is, is for the safety, health, and welfare of the community that they're, and you correct me, Mr. City Attorney, if, that cities have the power to do things that protect the health, safety, and welfare and to the extent that you can make that argument and through ordinance with legislation, then you can design a system that best meets the goals and objectives of the general plan and the city council.
Anything to add to that?
You would just have, you have separate power from Edison. You can't dictate what Edison does with respect to its allocations. However, if with enacting ordinance and regulations, you can say, we think that this is what needs to be satisfied in order for there to be further water allocations. And this was one of the things that we had researched a couple years ago when we, when the council was considering a moratorium a couple years ago and we just dusted off that research and it's still valid, so.
Okay.
Wasn't, let me ask a question, wasn't commercial building construction supposed to come to a halt at any phase of water rationing?
Well, they can't use potable water. And so, for instance, what the museum did was they brought in, or they can bring in their own water from the mainland.
Right.
And, or they can bring in like recycled water. So like for the mixing of concrete, they brought in their own water. They didn't use Avalon water for that. And so that's allowed because they're not impacting your water here.
Okay, let me ask you something, ask a question that's in relation to the same subject here. We're talking about the museum. We talked about a water allocation for the museum before, when they were building and it was understood that they, we would have to get out of water rationing before they received their water allocation, correct? They went over our heads to the Public Utilities Commission, correct, to get their water allocation, Because the humidifiers that they were going to, that they proposed to use weren't going to work. That was just not, not going to work for them. So with the information that you just gave us, David, would that be one of the decisions that we could have made to this point, which was to say to the museum, we're sorry, the agreement was that water was not available for your purposes? I mean, what do we give them, what did Edison give them, like 1,000 gallons a day or something?
Seven fifty.
Seven fifty, okay, close enough. So is that what we're talking about here? Is that what David was alluding, alluding to, was basically, these are situations that we could have a hand in?
Without, without knowing the facts in the past, I can tell you that based on what conversation with the city attorney and with my own experience and what other cities have done, that you have separate powers and a part to determine whether allocations can be made. Not that you make the allocations, but that whether they can be made at all. So you have that power, if you wish to exercise it, in determining for the safety, health, and welfare of the community and consistent with your growth management policies, whether those allocations are consistent. So the short answer is you have the power to determine whether they could be made at all. You don't make the allocations, that's the utility.
Okay, we had the power, we made, we made the decision. We didn't make the decision?
No, no, you, okay, what the city manager's talking about is you have the ability, if you adopt an ordinance...
If we adopt an ordinance.
But you don't have an ordinance right now that we're governing, but you have the police power to adopt an ordinance that provides this, what your ordinance currently provides and the practice is, is if Edison issues an allocation, then you will go ahead and issue permits. So your authority would be, you're not going to issue certificate of occupancies, you're not going to issue building permits, you're not going to issue the kind of permits that you can issue until you are satisfied that there's water available.
Okay, is it understood, then, that we're going to go ahead with this and try to find an ordinance here that fits in our situation so that we don't just keep doing projects one after the other in the middle of a water crisis?
I think that would be the direction that I would like to have the applicant.
Not wishing to run up the legal fees, but don't we already have the ability to impose a moratorium on construction?
Well, you have imposed a moratorium. Well, no, actually, you could impose a moratorium, the, your current regulations provide, then more that construction can go forward, you just cannot connect to the system. So people can, and the council's reasoning on that about a year ago was that some developers came in, they said, you're putting me out of business, I want to be able to continue to build, I just won't connect to the system until the water's available.
But we're finding that doesn't work, so we just could impose a moratorium.
You could, yes. And again, the council had considered that two years ago and it did not pass.
Just so, for clarity, my part, I'm not suggesting a moratorium. I'm suggesting, I think, that you have the tools to create a growth management program that you think best fits the community and that all subsidiary agencies or providers of service will have to conform with that reasoned approach that you would take in designing your own growth management, I think. Is that, is that a fair statement, City Attorney?
But then hypothetically, even if we did a moratorium, that would be from today forward or would that, would or could that be imposed on projects already approved?
I don't think that it could be retro, but that's...
No.
Okay.
Be going forward.
But the tariff doesn't allow them to hook up under Phase 2 or 3.
Okay, but however...
They go above it.
And this, and they're not going over our head, they're doing something that's quite allowed with, with the PUC, which is to file an informal complaint. And the reason the museum got it is because they, they said they were an educational agency and that's why Edison gave it to them. So my concern going forward is we, and why I'm bringing it up, is because we now have a conservancy building that's going to be built, they're going to be called an educational agency, they'll be able to go through the informal complaint process, and they will probably get their allocation. And again, that is, that was deemed a hotel and restaurant and bar before that serviced a lot of people. I don't know what their allocation is, but they will, they'd probably be able to get that. And when we're sitting where we are, I'm just concerned, you know, the museum didn't set well with the community when they did that, with a lot of the community, and I really don't want the conservancy to start off on a bad foot because the community is going to be very upset if they file the informal complaint and Edison gives it to them.
Madam Mayor, we need to bring this back as an item to you for discussion so you can then determine whether you wish to do it and if, that you do and what framework that you would want to put this in. We will do, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to divert you off.
No, that's good. So we have to do that before we just directed, we have to just...
Yes, yes, ma'am, we would, we would need to bring it back to you, I think, Mr. City Attorney. Yeah, we have a discussion.
Yeah, we, we're going to need to know in what, what form, whether, again, it's a moratorium, regulations.
I appreciate the conversation, I appreciate the subject being brought up, and I also think that water, drinking water, is far more important. I mean, education is very important, but museum, conservancy house, drinking water's far more important for the people of Avalon right now. Until we get past this, these drinking water woes that we've got right now, which we're working on, we're going to work on aggressively into the future, I just think we ought to look at this again. Thank you for bringing that up.
Well, thank you, Mayor.
Appreciate it. Well, the moratorium wording, we've already, it's already back out there somewhere, right? We have that pretty easy and we have the other one. I mean, so do we bring both of those forward and discuss them like that or...
Well, I think what we do is we bring, have this, we bring the concept of both of them and then we give you, we can bring the past moratorium that we did and then you give us direction.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the process, though, now we're looking at three to four months.
No, well, I think you may have, you may have the power, you may have the power if you deem so, that it's an urgency matter and under those conditions, it wouldn't take that long. You could adopt an ordinance on an urgency basis, then adopt it on a regular basis and one kind of trails the other. And you have to make findings, though, because it does make it faster than the normal process. But we'll certainly bring it back with, we hope, a reasoned, some ideas that then you can provide us with direction on.
Okay, perfect.
Excellent.
Okay. That was the city manager report, city attorney report.
The only thing I have is the reminder that this upcoming Thursday from 1 to 5, you're having a marijuana study session. We did meet with the people that are doing the session to give them an overview of your current ordinances as well as the initiative proposed in November for Avalon, and they're also very familiar with the statewide ordinance, or the statewide recreational marijuana use, so they'll be able to discuss all those topics on Thursday.
Perfect, excellent. Councilmember report?
I have none.
Tomorrow I will be attending the Gateway City's Council of Government Board meeting. Transportation meeting was canceled due to lack of agenda and to, one, that I may need the harbor master to help me clarify. The question at the last council meeting was regarding storage for kayaks and it is my understanding, so please correct me where I'm wrong, that kayaks are always allowed on the dinghy dock located at the casino at the fuel dock and while that dock is out of service, the kayaks have been allowed on South Beach near the old boat ramp.
Correct.
And then what about for those that, that don't have the ability to physically take them out of the water? Could they be on maybe the Barbara Pearson dock or are they just not allowed on the docks other than...
They're just allowed on the casino dinghy dock because they turn sideways and then don't allow the dinghies to get into the dock itself. So at the casino dinghy dock, they're able to sneak in behind the backside where the other skiffs couldn't.
Okay. Is that something that they could do at the Barbara Pearson dock?
It's pretty full with other skiffs. We haven't had anybody complain that they weren't able to take it up out of the water and put it on the beach.
Okay, so for now, they are able to go on South Beach and I've seen a couple of them there recently as well.
Correct.
Okay. And then while you're still here, Brian, my next one is concerns harbor as well, possibly. Mr. Jenkins, has there been any staff discussion regarding raking the beaches and cleanliness?
Yes, there has, and I, maybe we have an update. I know that the Public Works Department and our new Fine Community Services Director, they're talking about sharing some staff and actually that may, I thought I saw people raking the beaches, maybe it was you, Dan, but, but today, but maybe, do you have, does anyone have, oh, is, oh, do you have, oh, Dennis, I didn't see you, I apologize.
How can you miss that? That's a good question.
Good evening. Yes, it's continual. We're raking the beaches in the morning and the afternoons, seven days a week. Our part-timers are getting it in the weekends amongst all the towels that are out there, but more importantly, the shoreline where the bacteria testing is ongoing. We're trying to keep up on that and frankly, the results show that we're making progress in that aspect.
Just a quick question, I mean, I appreciate the fact that you're doing it every day, twice a day. Is that interfering with other things not getting done?
No, we do have limited staff. We're working a little more overtime than we want to, but that's, that's a priority. As you know, we're off the beach bummers list. One of the reasons is raking these beaches and cleaning up all the trash down there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And then secondary to the beaches, there's been a little bit of community discussion about blankets going missing in the mornings and I had sent a request to city staff to find out if there was in fact an ordinance about, if there was any time constraints on putting out chairs or blankets or whatnot.
I couldn't find anything.
Okay, so, so there, in general, there shouldn't be a reason why members of the community couldn't go and, and place their blankets down for their day's activity?
Denise, are you, I'm not familiar with the issue.
I couldn't find anything in our code that had any timeframe for people to lay their towels down.
And what's happening now are people are leaving them 24/7.
Which is, you know, I absolutely disagree with that. It takes space away from someone else who may want to use the beach. I do understand that. The concern is, is blankets are, and towels are being taken and thrown away or taken. So that was the concern. So I was just making it public whether or not there was or wasn't an ordinance on that and whether or not somebody has the right to be able to go down and stake their claims, so to speak, for the day. Okay, that's all I have.
That's tradition, right?
It's tradition, yeah.
It's been that way for 60 years.
Councilmember Hernandez?
I did, I got, I had the pleasure of playing in Don Canaby's 22nd Annual Golf Tournament yesterday at Lakewood Country Club and it was a nice send-off. Since Don's running into his last few months in office and it was very well-attended and he did a great job and he does a great job for Avalon. So I know, I think we have a little something planned for him here, maybe on the 8th of September. I'd like to see everybody come out and show their appreciation. Really good guy, but it was a very nice thing yesterday we did.
Well, how did you fare, how'd your team fare?
It was really a nice day.
Oh, okay. Go ahead. Thank you for being there. Okay. And Councilmember Sampson?
No, no, please.
Um, get down to the mundane stuff. I know it's summertime, I know it's busy, but can we sit down with our independent contractors doing our trash service and talk about some increased hours, increased pickup frequency, especially on the weekends?
Yes, let me, if I may, we have had a concern with both the cleanliness and the frequency on peak days with, with containers. We know that the, some of the containers have plastic lids on them that have been literally burned. In the past, they were burned and dirty. The contractor was made aware of the situation. He has gone down and now we have burned clean containers, but, and they're cleaned. We know that in peak, particularly this last weekend, he made probably six runs and, and Mr. Olson, the Mayor Protim's point is that whatever it takes to keep it clean, we need to keep it clean and that's the goal that we have. And we'll have further conversations with, with Mr. Vega regarding the service to make sure. The other one is on the restrooms that Dan brought up. We're concerned, we want to be sure that they're maintained and kept clean. Some of us go out and look at periodically. I don't go in the women's restroom, but, but other people do that. And we want to make sure it's clean all the time to make our residents and our visitor experience good.
If you identify with that, you can go in the women's restroom.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Thank you, thank you for the clarification.
So, yeah, I just want to make sure, I know Mr. Vega works very, very hard at what he does and I know that, you know, we're not, we may want to ban styrofoam, but we can't ban all containers. And there is just a lot of garbage produced in this town and I think he picks up about 150 trashcans on more than one occasion a day. And so I am some, I'm very sympathetic with the amount of work, so I just hope if, if he's working within his contract, I mean, whatever can be done, but I think we, he's been doing it for 15 years. I, I think he's done a bang-up job with what he has. I, I think he's done a bang-up job with what he has and I would like us to just be sympathetic to, to him and, but.
The sheriffs. We have annual contract with the sheriffs and we pay additional money in the summertime for additional coverage.
Right. So if that's the kind of thing we're talking about, I think that's great. But, cause he's, I know he's.
We, we are not yet having that conversation, but I suspect based on the demand in recent times that that, we will have that conversation, looking at his contract. And, and everybody that I've spoken to or I've heard about or complimented to Mr. Vega, we have had some very high use, which has created that demand. And so to the extent that this continues, I'm sure we will be having conversations on that regard.
Great. Thank you.
I'm done.
That was a Monday. Okay. Um, I want to, for, for the constituents out there, I want to thank you, David, for having the conversation with Captain Federal about the bike rentals and Captain for going and speaking to them and taking the time to talk to them about a little more, just reiterating the need for safety. So thank you very much. That was awesome. I love this management update. Thank you. And one of the things that was on there, and I'm sure you've all got it, about the strategic planning is, I don't know who's, with the, with the changing of the guard, I don't know who's responsible for setting up our meetings, but the September meeting you're wanting to have about our priorities and strategic planning.
Yes, ma'am. Later in the month, if September, we'll give you, we'll give you some pre, pre-information. We'll probably do a pre-survey. We'll have staff get together and identify recommendations to you that you, we will give you plenty of time to read and then you will, as a body, have that discussion.
But in terms of setting the date, do you, did you want to come up with some dates to present to us and then we'll check our calendars that way?
With your, with your pleasure, that would be, we would appreciate it.
Yeah, that would be good. I just, okay. And the other one, you had talked about parking enforcement and residential parking permit feasibility. And your suggestion was that we should ask the planning commission to develop and recommend a residential parking permit program to help locals with this parking shortage.
Yes.
If this is in fact the way we want, shall we direct it this time?
I think we, it's, I believe we already did direct staff to do that.
I just don't know how formally, but.
When was that?
I know we've discussed it.
Possibly two meetings ago.
I know we've discussed it, but.
Better utilization of the planning commission and this would have been one of the items that they could move forward on.
If, if you have already provided direction in that regard, we will make it so. We will see that that occurs.
Okay. Yeah, well, let's just make sure.
Thank you.
Yes.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. That's all I have.
Annie, can I, can I ask you a question? So with that said, isn't that, shouldn't we move forward on a, a complete vehicle, traffic, parking safety plan for the entire community at this point? I mean, aren't we ready now? Because that's something that, that we were facing when we first started this journey a couple of years ago. And we had other things that were far more important than that. But I think that's starting to get to be a, a real problem in this town right now that a lot of people are noticing.
Yeah.
How, how many is too many?
Right.
How much is enough? I mean, our policy is, is not complete at all. We said, okay, we're going to limit the amount of full-size vehicles, but we're going to let as many golf carts as can possibly fit in these streets out here. So I don't know how much farther we can go without traffic coming to a standstill.
We, I don't believe we put any money in the budget this year for a traffic study, correct? I was still kind of confused on what Vons had to do for traffic study. If there's still something coming forward for them, there is.
I have understood that they have to have a traffic, a parking plan, which to my knowledge, and I could stand corrected, is not yet available. And they're going to have to look at the, those intricacies. The comment that you made, Mayor, and that councilmember Sampson made, there are a lot of vehicles and the problem, as you know, those, you've lived here for a long time, is that there's no place for people who live there to park many times there. And, and the question then also becomes, how does traffic flow? What, you know, where can people park? And it is, it's complicated, more complicated here than it used to be. And, and it would be good for us to take a look at it. I don't know, though, what that cost would be if we had someone do it.
It's got to be part of the growth study. It's got to, there's got to be something in our general plan that, that addresses this issue.
Very good point. And we will, and I will go back and look at the general plan. It may have some guidance already. We'll, we'll take a look at that. I don't remember then.
But do you have a problem with this, at least going forward on this permit parking? To look at that?
I'd like to look at that because that's a temporary fix for one element of a really convoluted problem that we have. It involves safety, parking, vehicles, street signs, sidewalks, crosswalks, handicap curbs. We've got to get into this real soon or it's going to become really serious.
Already has.
Point well taken.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Presentations? Okay, oral communication. This is an opportunity for members of the community to speak on an item that is not on the agenda. And speakers should limit their comments to three minutes and no action will be taken.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Gary Mater. I learned yesterday about your prior vote to remove Avalon's only beach volleyball court in order to provide additional space for swings for young children, which will be reconsidered and voted on at your next meeting. I am here today to urge you to retain Avalon's only beach volleyball court at its present location. Sue and I own a condo at Villa Vista and for the past four years, we've been spending three and a half months a year here in Avalon, including all of July and August. I have spent at least the month of August here for all 66 years of my life thus far. And except for the first few years, all of those have included playing volleyball at the beach here. The present location with level sand and fencing all the way around solved all of the problems we had for years prior to 1970 of playing in the wet sand of Lower South Beach near the seawall, including the rather serious political problem presented shortly before 1970 by one spiked ball hitting the wet sand and bouncing up into the face of the then mayor's wife reading her book in the corner above the seawall, breaking her sunglasses. I remember as a young, I guess I was about 18, 19, going with dad to the city council over on Metropole the following week to get our volleyball court back. We did, but the problem was solved later with the mole. Avalon is a beach resort as the promo song goes, "Sunny and 75." Every beach in Southern California needs at least one beach volleyball court. Teenagers and adults, islanders, part-time residents and visitors need a beach volleyball court. We have one and given our space limitations in Avalon, the last 45 years since 1970, we have had the best beach volleyball court we've ever had. It ain't broke and there's no better place for it. South Beach will not work, as I think you now understand. Let's not make a big mistake and remove it. Now, I took some measurements this afternoon and I have a couple of possible ideas for locations other than the volleyball court for a play area for swings, including one on the mole side of the war memorial. I will discuss them with Dan and David and I would love to talk with any of you about them or anything else. I'm in Avalon until September the 8th. Here is a written copy of my presentation with my contact information and the names of a small fraction of the current volleyball players whom I know, a few of whom are here tonight. Please raise your hands, gang. And hoping you'll pass that around. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was very succinct. That was great.
Two minutes and 40 seconds.
Perfect.
Love it.
Did a good job.
Thanks, Gary. Very well done.
Hi, I'm, name is Debbie Tarpley and I'm here, I can't see my words. I'm here on the island because of a volleyball court. And here's my story. Four families met on the volleyball court approximately 25 years ago. We often played on that court four to five hours a day. If we weren't playing, we were watching and talking most days of our vacation. We all became good friends. We had parents and kids alike. We attended the other family's kids' weddings on the mainland and et cetera. And to this day, we vacation on the same weeks here so that our grandkids can play on the sand together. By the way, we left the mommies, who also would have raised their hand, with the 12 littles that are nine and under. We didn't want to bring them here for you. We figured you would appreciate it if they weren't here. The older still managed to get some volleyball playing in on the sand court, even though they've got the young ones. We hope to teach all the, our own kids and our grandkids the sport in years to come. In fact, my oldest grandchildren, who are nine and eight, have already told me they want to learn how to play volleyball on the court, that their daddies and their mommies learned to play volleyball. What started with four families, the Wrights, the Tarpleys, the Maters and the Riley's, now have kids grown up to grown up to nine families who vacation in Avalon every summer. We now even own four homes on the island, so we're here more than just the summer. This all started with just one week of joint vacation year after year after year. There are many more summers in the week and it's many more weeks in the summer and many of them have similar stories, all involving volleyball friendships. I ask you to please reconsider keeping the volleyball court because it's a great place for all generations to come together, to mingle and to enjoy each other. It's also one of the few places in the city that keeps the teens and the tweens busy in a constructive manner and allows them to use up some of their energy. And I've raised two boys. They have lots of energy. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. That's it? Okay.
My name's Nathan West. I was here last meeting. I want to thank you all for that last time. I know you can't actually take any actions at this point, but I'm kind of in a unique situation and I'm not exactly sure where I stand on everything, kind of limbo. I guess my question would be, can I talk to the city manager about coming up with some kind of a compromise situation until you have an opportunity to act on the situation?
I, I'm always happy to talk to people about things that we could be of some help.
And this was, do you know what this is about?
No.
He's a, he lives in the harbor and the mooring fee's at 18%? Like a residential mooring?
I think we have had a conversation maybe, or I heard.
I haven't had a conversation.
No, you spoke to someone else on a different subject. Similar, but different. The, the discussion at the last, the discussion at the last meeting was, could staff get together to look at the possibility of doing something different for the local boaters since there's such a small percentage of them that live on their vessels in the harbor year-round? This is not a six-month live aboard, this is a year-round. Is there some, is there something that the city could do to better accommodate the needs of what we're, should consider local, local community?
Yeah, so, so just to show you that I think I understand would be, those people who are residents who live on boats, should we be looking at a different way of looking at their use of the harbor as opposed to people who do not live here full-time? And, and certainly we can, there's no objection, we could certainly do that. I mean, I, it sounds, makes, it makes sense to, to at least have a discussion and try to figure out with appropriate people to, what, what that might be.
Well, right now, the situation I'm in right now is, is like I brought up last time, I normally pay about a month ahead of time as a general rule. I've always been, tried to be very good about making sure that, you know, I'm not in arrears or anything. Because of the increase, the way the increase happened was it happened, you know, at the beginning of the month. And under harbor books right now, they, they say I owe an additional $168 for the month that I feel I've already paid for. And even by my own admission, come Saturday, I definitely do owe more money. I'm just kind of in a limbo on, you know, I, I feel pretty strongly about the fact that I shouldn't have to pay additional money for money I've already paid for and have a receipt for. And then also in the future until this body has decided how best to handle it. I, I'm kind of in limbo and I don't like it.
Well, what we can do is the harbor master will talk and we'll, we'll get together with you. We can do that a day this week. That's, that works for.
I, I'll be honest with you, I've worked with vessel, SIS, Boat U.S.
Well, you tell, give us some times and we'll, we'll make ourselves available.
Okay.
I appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Nathan.
Any other oral communication? Okay. And as we get in the consent calendar, I, I hope you all stick around. There's no reason to all get up and go play volleyball.
Yeah, there is.
I know. I know, it's a lot cooler this time of night. Okay.
Do we want to take a moment and if they don't want to stay, let them file out?
If you want to bail, you can bail, but Leslie, it's nice to see you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay.
Mayor, maybe I should mention at this time that there has been a request to continue an item on the regular agenda, but there may be people here who wish to address it. It is for the shoreboats. Just to say that mutually both staff and, and the, the company have asked, the island enterprises have asked to continue this matter for further dialogue and discussion on the issue. It would be appropriate, I believe, when the matter comes up after consent for, should there be anyone who wished to, to comment, that you could accept comments but continue the matter. In terms of the consent calendar, you have, it says that although the live recording is an official record of public meetings, you do have a recommendation to approve actions from the July 5th, July 19th and regular council meetings and the July 14 special council meeting. That's item number one. Item number two is bring an item that is brought back from previous council direction. It's to approve an audit committee policy. I'd like to thank the finance director for his efforts in taking your direction and working up a proposal. And that's it.
And I just have a little question about, about the second one without really pulling it. So the current audit committee is tickle pink with the new responsibilities? Okay.
Said it's wonderful.
Oh, goodness, wonderful.
It's not like Richard's golf game.
It's a beautiful day. Okay. So, council, what is your pleasure on that consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve items one and two.
Second.
Further comment? Call for the vote?
I'll look.
All eyes?
And now we go to general business. Item three.
Yes, well, I'll, I'll give the intro with the help of staff on this one. It's a parking reconfiguration plan for Metropole Avenue. In January of 2007, during negotiations for the approval to construct homes in the Hamilton Cove area, there was a development agreement initiated and agreed to with Hamilton Cove and the city of Avalon. This agreement called for the developer to create additional parking stalls in the city for each phase of his work. The recommended action is to authorize city manager to approve and allow Hamilton Pacific LLC to paint and reconfigure the parking stalls on each side of Metropole in accordance with an attached parking plans, which all of you should have. Are there, if there are questions, Mr. Jake, he could, he can answer them for you.
Come on up. Does any of you have questions or is this a slam dunk?
Oh, I have one question. This is, the, the plan includes changes that should be made to Sumner as well, but we're only looking at Metropole at this time?
Correct.
Okay. And then on the proposed angled parking spaces, on the, I want to say it would be the north side of Metropole where it says full-size vehicle parking, that would actually be parallel parking. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So as it is now?
Correct.
Okay.
Actually, they're, both sides are parallel now.
Right.
We're going to be changing the south side with diagonal or angled parking.
Okay.
Which will increase the parking spaces.
And is there accessible parking built into that, too?
Handicap? Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Great.
So, the only concern I have with it is traffic flow. Because if I'm driving my truck in from the interior or up on, or Joe, wherever you live and you're driving your thing and now you want to go to Vons, you're going to have to go all the way up and then turn around somewhere to come back down to park my truck, right?
No.
No.
There's a. There's a question with north, south, east, and west on, on the problem, but if we, if we look at, if you're facing the museum, that is kind of looking north.
The diagonal's on the post office side, and the full size is on the Vaughn's side.
Correct.
Like this.
So, the museum side and vacant property Hermosa Vaughn's side, that all essentially stays the same?
That's full-size, though. It would be, it would be dedicated to full-size vehicles?
Yes, sir.
Will golf carts be able to park there? Because like a lot of other parking in town, you have golf cart parking on one side, you have open parking on another side, and most of the open parking is consumed by golf carts, because there's 4,000 golf carts and 400 vehicles, full-size vehicles.
Just driving up here today, I noticed a bunch of carts parked on the north side. So the city's going to have to think about some signage in the area to just limit it to larger vehicles on that side.
Do we have, do we have to have an ordinance for that?
You have the authority, we have the authority as traffic engineer, to, to make appropriate designations. Of course, subject should you not like what we do, we could always change it, but, but we have the authority, I believe.
So it'd be like no autoettes?
Yeah.
Yeah, for, for, it'd be restricted parking, and it would say, for, for large size, or whatever the proper terminology would be.
So if you compare it to the other side of the street, though, we're, we're going from 10 possible full-size spaces to 23 autoette spaces on the south side of the street. That's the difference.
Yeah, it's a net increase of at least 18 slots.
What about taxi? Do we have a little easement for taxi parking, because that's where they're...
It's not considered in this attachment that I received from planning department.
I've got to throw that out there, because that's going to be, because they're going to be double parking there, is what's going to happen, because that's their, their office.
That's a good point.
So we got to think about that, and then...
And to add to that, if you don't mind, councilman, that taxi space there, because I'm not good at maps, I apologize, but that taxi space is also then where our e-bus goes? Where's our e-bus?
It's in the other side of the street, you mean.
It's here? The e-bus is here?
E-bus is right outside of the apartments, Greg Miller's apartments.
Okay.
And then I believe, although I'm not 100% sure, but I believe that the taxis lease space behind the building for their cabs, for overnight parking.
Yeah, I believe so.
So...
So they have parking spaces right there behind the building?
So they can just go back there, instead of double parking?
Instead of double parking.
The only here, too, because we've had some complaints from residents up on Upper Beacon, where they can't see, because the e-buses are parked on Metropole, and it's blocking their view to see who's coming up Metropole, so...
Yoli Montana. My, okay, it really, the congestion got really bad when the taxi stand moved from down, down at the bottom to, to upper Metropole. And I feel like it's, it's a very dangerous situation, because there, we have two apartments right on the corner of Beacon and Metropole. And they park there, and then when they, instead of going all the way around, they pull like that, and they back out, and they come down, and they're doing like U-turns in the middle of, of coming up Beacon, down Metropole, and I just, it's frightening, for one, and I feel like it's just a hub. The, that, that area is a hub for the taxi drivers now, and at 1:00 in the morning, I get complaints from our tenants that, you know, they're coming up, and then they're backing, backing down right in front of the apartment buildings, where the windows and entrances to apartments, and it's that loud beep, 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 and it's constant. And I just hope when you guys are, you know, reconfiguring this parking, if we can take that into effect, because that is residential commercial area, and it's just, the congestion is insane. And I have taken pictures, because when you come down the top of Beacon Street, and you go to cross, either go straight down Beacon, or make a left, and the e-bus is right there, if they're not really parked close to the curb, and they're kind of out, which happens sometimes, you can't see oncoming vehicles, and you have to really be slow, because you're going to get T-boned. Because if you're coming onto traffic, and you don't see that vehicle behind the e-bus, it's going to smack right into a vehicle, oncoming vehicle, and then, you know, coming around the corner, too. So it's just something that I think maybe if you can back down a little bit, just a little bit, you know, towards maybe in front of the Casa Marquita, or towards that empty lot, a little bit for, you know, the e-bus pickups and drop-offs, and maybe, I don't know, is that taxi, is it e-bus or taxi right there? Does anybody know? Because I know it used to be taxi and the trolley, and now the e-bus picks up and drops off there, but I see taxis parked there all the time. So I don't, maybe we can figure out whose spot that is?
It does sound like a, a conversation needs to happen with, with the taxi service and Catalina Transportation Services, and I think some of that concern can easily be worked out with a conversation with the taxi company.
Okay.
As far as backing out, and, and consideration at nighttime for backing up and U-turning and all that.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Good comments, thank you. So, okay, on the full-size vehicle parking, there will be stripes, correct? It's not going to be like now there's no stripes, and you just, they will be striped as actual slots?
Correct.
I don't see how you can't, how can you stripe full-size spots, when there's such a variation between the size vehicles that come into town and park there? I mean, or that they're in town and park there? It's not, because there's exceptions to the rules now.
Well, the south side, taxi stand, Buffalo Motors side, will be striped for autoettes on an angle, 45-degree angle.
She's talking about full-size, the other side, the north side.
On the other side, we're going to make perpendicular stripes for large vehicles, but the city is going to have to work out how we're going to limit only large vehicle parking there, if that's your intent.
So, and I think, to follow Mr. Thompson, is there's some standard, if you're looking at a full-size vehicle, it's got to be 14 feet, or, I mean, there's some standard traffic regulation that would...
It's going to be a regular vehicle, size vehicle.
So blue sticker vehicles, is what we're talking about, right?
Right, right.
Okay.
And there's some standard in the highway code or...
It doesn't seem like it would be any different than any sort of, you know, like a Belmont Shore, or Second Street over in Long Beach, you have, you know, the angle spots that delineate what a parking spot is, and whether you drive a big old Toyota, or whether you drive a little tiny Toyota, you know, you have, may have more space or not. So I think that's what my understanding of how the striping would be, is it's okay if your car's a little bit smaller, you're going to fit.
Right, right.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry that the attached drawing doesn't have the size of those perpendicular stripes, but we can certainly check into it.
And I have another question. What about the, the length of time they're going to be able to park there?
It's one hour now.
Yeah, one hour now.
All, all the way up, but, but when you get to the top, it's not, isn't it?
On the other side of Beacon, it's not.
That was, the intent was one hour.
One hour?
We have a couple of curb cuts that don't go anywhere, in front of...
The motherland.
They have Buffalo Motors in the...
In front of the museum?
No, on the other side of the street.
Yeah, there's a Big Depression, that's going to be painted green.
Are we going to get rid of the curb cuts and put regular curb in?
Yeah, it's going to be painted green with the angled parking places there.
So we're not going to redo the sidewalk?
That, that's what Ollie's asking, is whether you're going to take those curb cuts out and make them solid.
She's asking if you're going to put in a new sidewalk, basically, what she's asking.
A new curb and gutter and sidewalk? Is that what you're asking?
That's what he's asking, yeah.
That wasn't planned, we can certainly do it. We just have to get you to approve the funds. I can get you a cost on that.
Why would we do, can I ask that question? I mean, are you asking...
Just because it's a view.
Yeah, I've seen people trip on it. They're walking on the sidewalk, and they don't expect to hit the curb.
You're talking about the old cuts for the fire trucks?
Yeah, fire truck cuts.
Yeah, that's right.
Wait a minute, they trip on...
Oh, I do.
Unless...
Yeah, if they're going down, it's the longer...
You're not paying attention, all of us here, just thinking it's going to be flat.
But there's already curb cuts on the sidewalks, anyway.
Yeah, there's going to be a curb cut anyways, there's still going to chip on it.
It's something that we can certainly do in-house. My recommendation would be to, let's go ahead and let Mr. Flynn stripe this thing, check it out, and if you guys decide you want a curb and gutter there, we'd be happy to put it in for you.
Thanks, Dennis.
You're welcome.
He's not going to be doing this on Monday and Tuesday, is he?
Pardon?
He's not going to be doing this on a Monday and a Tuesday.
Which is a good point, like today.
Okay, it's just a little scary for me to see all of a sudden all these stripes being put on the ground, and...
I think it helps us solve some of the problem we've been complaining about for two years, which is there's not enough parking. We've been asking for this, so...
Yeah. Okay, so a standard width of the street is, for two-way traffic is 24 feet?
Depends on the nature of the arterial, so it could be, it could be a 60-foot, it could be a 40-foot, depending upon with a 10-foot on either side, right? Depends on, I'm not sure what the standard is we have in the street there, I don't know.
So I guess I'm a little concerned with the width, width, because it's, you have 22-8, I think, as the, as the road, actual roadway then, that would be available for people, right?
Yes.
And so, you get a big truck, and you get an e-bus going down, and they're going to be able to go like this, pretty well? That 22 feet's good?
Yes, it's, fortunately, Metropole's probably our widest street, you know, and I wasn't involved in the original plan, but in looking at it the other day, it appears it's going to work out fine. We're still going to be able to have two-way traffic, along with the angled parking.
The good thing now is nobody will be able to maybe just zip around.
The great thing is it might reduce the speed of the traffic on that street.
Okay, I just, you know, with two big vehicles, I was just a little concerned.
And we'll have a center stripe, right, Dennis? A center stripe, we'll have a center stripe, so people know what side of the road is the what side of the road.
There isn't currently one there, nor is there many, uh, but we can certainly put one.
And that would be just as a guide to people, so, you know, not to, not to say that people don't know, but it just would be a helpful guide if you had a stripe.
Well, it might be helpful for law enforcement, because if there ever is a collision, they can see who's on what side of the line. Or you just guessed that, Doug, how do you handle that? We don't have a lot of head-ons, I understand, or side-swipes, but...
We also are considering council member Hernandez's request for the wheelchair ramps and crosswalks up on the top of Metropole and Beacon. Planning department's been working on that, and we're going to have some information for you on that, but it's still in the works.
Thank you.
One of the things also is, in conjunction with the striping, we've talked about this, that we'd like to re-stripe some areas that are, that are currently around the school, and we'd like to re-stripe, so it's clear, not that it's not, but we want to make it clear. And, and in different, where there's limit lines, or stop signs, we want to make sure we're checking, to make sure that the stop signs are in place, and they're functional, they can, they can be seen, there's no obstructions, and, and we think that might help, and this is the opportunity to facilitate that.
Correct. The city manager and I have discussed the, the need for what is called thermoplastic, real hard type, two-part melted plastic lining. Marissa's just constantly painting things, so this would really help. We're going to have to come back and ask you for the funds.
Great, thank you. Okay. Comments from the community? Okay, council?
Motion to direct the city manager to approve the Hamilton Pacific LLC to paint and reconfigure parking stalls on the side of Metropole in accordance with the attached parking plan.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moving to second for the comment?
Do we, do we need to inform the taxis about double parking, using, utilizing their own parking spaces, and then, I mean, is that important? And then, figure out what we're going to do with the e-buses? Is that part of all this, on the other side?
I think, yeah, we, we just asked the city staff to reach out to CTS and have a conversation on...
Okay. Thanks. Call for the vote.
Appreciate it.
All eyes.
Thank you.
And now, item four. Plastic bags and styrofoam.
Item number four is an item at the request of council member Booken Cassidy for consideration and direction to develop a ordinance that would ban plastic bags and styrofoam. Just for a little bit of background, there is, the city's considered the plastic bag ban about a year and a half ago, and there is an initiative, the state legislature banned all plastic bags statewide. And what happened was, the plastic bag industry got together an initiative that suspended that. That initiative is on the November ballot. If that initiative passes, recent polling shows, so it's going to pass by like 60 to 40, then that ban would go into effect statewide, and that ban would ban plastic bags for most purposes, and require a minimum of a 10% bag charge for a paper bag. So if that, or if that initiative is passed, Avalon will in effect have a plastic banned bag. In addition to that, though, that does not cover styrofoam, and so the city of San Francisco, as long as about over 100 cities, have enacted some form of bans on styrofoam containers. And so, before you, as a consideration for both, one, do you want to direct staff to develop your own ordinance on plastic banned bags? And do you want staff to develop an ordinance dealing with the styrofoam regulation? San Francisco recently passed this. There's the three things. It banned styrofoam products within a certain date. It directed the city to come forward with a list of containers that would be appropriate, so that if it's one of these containers, it's automatically allowed. And third, it allowed an exemption for financial hardship. So it did all three. You don't have to do all three. If you wanted to ban styrofoam, you could just ban it, period, and let the businesses figure out what alternatives are. There are alternatives there, and you don't have to put in a hardship, financial hardship, but you could. San Francisco does everything. You could do a little bit less. It's a pure policy issue.
Can you, let's see, can you tell, can you tell Vaughns they can't sell styrofoam, and they can't sell plastic?
You, you, what this, so far is only, the, not with respect to the products that they're, you know, in terms of what's in the product, we haven't seen that anywhere. What we're talking about is, for the bags that people take to groceries out, or for the restaurants, what they serve the food in, for the takeout, the styrofoam takeouts. I'm not aware of any ban anywhere in the country, dealing with the content of the actual products themselves, where a city would say...
He's not talking about that. He's talking about like that styrofoam ice chests. That Vaughn sells, would they be banned?
Yes, could do that.
Styrofoam ice chest, they sell styrofoam cups, they sell plastic trash bags.
You could, you could ban that, yes.
Because if we're going to, I mean, if we're, were we really doing this? I mean, are we really going to tell...
We're talking about it.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, this, I mean, that's where I'm going with this, this is huge. There's going to be a lot more questions that need to be asked here.
Well, and I, and I think after today, this now, people are going to hear about it, and then the discussions are really going to start, which is, which is wonderful.
What, let me just say, what, one of the things that the San Francisco ordinance does do, is it allows some styrofoam, but it has to be fully encased with other plastic, so that the styrofoam does not leach through. You know, so, anyway.
I get it, yeah.
It's the most comprehensive regulation.
So where do you get around it?
Well, I, I want to say, though, that there's, the basic concept is, how environmentally friendly do we want to be? And one of the council's goals is to be one of the greenest cities in the state. This is a move in that direction. Secondarily to that, we have an issue with our landfill. We, at some point in the nearer versus latter future, we are going to be paying to ship our trash off the island. We, it, it's just a matter of fact. And so, however we can help to mitigate what we're putting in the landfill, using more eco-friendly, environmentally safe products, is going to be better for, for all of us in general. So, am I thinking in terms of, are we going to ban hefty trash bags? No, that's not the thought. But where can we make a difference? And that might be, with 150,000, 200,000 styrofoam takeaway containers that go into our landfill, can we make some alternate decisions? And can we, can we be better as a community and find alternatives to do this? In addition to that, you have, you know, the Vaughns' plastic bags, which most cities in the, in, most cities that we've even heard about over the last two years, have enacted a plastic bag ban already, and it's just a matter of education and... And then even in our own city, based on conversations we had almost two years ago, some of our retailers have already made the decision to move from plastic to paper bags. So there's a lot of good that putting an ordinance in place that, that says follows one of our council goals, which is how do we become a greener city? But it, it doesn't, we don't, I don't know that we have the capacity or the wherewithal at this particular time to be so stringent as to, to say Vons can't carry something, but if we're looking at what we're using as restaurant takeaways and, um, you know, other, uh, takeaway-type containers, it's a step in the right direction.
Hi again. I just wanna let you know that I'm, I'm, this is a breath of fresh air that, um, you guys are talking about this today. It was about six years ago that we decided that we weren't, we weren't gonna, we were gonna use all biodegradable items at the hotel for our continental breakfast, for anything we can use biodegradable, um, sustainable items, um, we got. And it was at a cost six years ago, 'cause the town was like, what? No, you know, everybody wanted, you know, the cheapest, the, you know, more affordable, and we would bring in, we looked everywhere and we got it. And just to let you know that I think finally the island is going there, because we finally got Cat Bev on board, because they can't bring items in if other people aren't, you know, buying the same items. So I know the Descanso uses them, a lot of restaurants uses biodegradable, um, plates, forks, everything, you know? And so I think we're already, you know, we're there, people are aware now, and, um, we can get it. It's easy to get now from our vendors, so, um, I'm, I'm very happy that you guys are going that way. And right now, going into stage three, uh, restaurants are gonna start using, you know, paper plates and, and, and paper cups, and, um, we should be concerned, as Cindy said, with our landfill. I mean, I don't, we don't have very many years left, and with water, no water, I think, I think it's a great thing. Make a ban. Do something. Make a change. Thank you.
That just brings up more questions for me. Um, you, you will, you will have no more styrofoam containers, plastic bags, but what about forks, spoons, knives? Uh, what about ice chests? Um, are we gonna sell those? Um, where, where do we draw the line here?
That's our decision.
Okay, because how many plastic bags can you get out of one plastic fork? And which is, which is, I'm understanding that you could probably make about 10 plastic bags out of one disposable plastic fork. That has to do with landfill. That has to do with environmental friendliness. I mean, we gotta do some study in here. I see that right now.
I just, Paula Patterson, and this is my passion. I just, I can't, I can't believe that this beautiful little place is so far behind when it comes to our peer group of coastal tourist towns, all up and down the coast, have banned all this stuff years ago. And so I think it's a really great opportunity that you have many places that you can go to find guidance, and I wanna appreciate, I went to Cindy and I sent her Manhattan Beach just did it, and they have put out a plan on their website about how they did it, what the implications were, and just to say, on those issues about plastic bags in the store, those bans don't, it's not for, it's for using, for carryout, for materials, you can still go and buy trash bags at the trash. I mean, any community I've lived in that has had this kind of ban, um, for years now, um, you can buy plastic bags at the store, but all of those products, like plastic forks, cups, they're all biodegradable now. They're made out of potatoes, they're made out of bamboo, they're made out of many different items that are all biodegradable. So it is a huge change, and it takes time to change people's minds about what needs to be done. And, and it's so simple that, you know, you'll be shocked at people here that have been waiting for this and want it to happen so badly in our town, and it just seems like, oh my gosh, how's that gonna happen? And it will. One of the things I heard was, what about people on their boats? That came up on, and I thought about that, and I was thinking to myself, well, golly, 40 years ago, there were no plastic bags. So, you know, people carried canvas bags often on their boats to, to take their groceries back and forth. And, you know, it's, it's so doable, and it would make an incredible difference in your landfill and the cost of, of garbage here. It would just be unbelievable, and anyway, I'm just, I'm, you know, I'm so for it. So anything I can do, I'm here, but there's so, so many towns have done this already. You have tons of guidance wait at your fingertips.
Thank you, Paula. Excellent. And there was this discussion we had a little while, you know, a number of months ago about, yeah, getting those business to get, businesses together to talk about how they could co-op purchases, so if you're the little guy, it might not be as much if you can order in big bulk and distribute, and so... So how do you wanna, I mean, I, I, these are two things that I have always been in favor of, so, of banning, so, uh...
My proposal would be, um, I have in fact forwarded information. I would be happy to re-forward that to city staff. Um, as Paula mentioned, there is the entire plan of what Manhattan Beach has done, the whole process that they went through and ordered, the outreach, the community relations with it, um, and they are not the only city. So there is opportunity for us to, um, have city staff bring back an actual plan based on what other cities have done. We do not have to recreate the wheel here, but, but I would, so my, my request would be, could we give city staff direction to move forward with presenting a plan to the council on, um, how we sunset, how we go about it, what products would be involved, uh, to initiate the plastic bag ban and the styrofoam ban? And then I, so that would be my request for direction. Secondarily to that, I, I do want to, to respond to what the city attorney was talking about as far as what the federal government may do. There's still an opportunity that the federal, that, that this may not pass, and so I, we wait and we wait and we wait and we wait. And so I'm just saying, we should love our community enough to want to go green, and we should move forward, regardless of what the decision at the state or federal level is.
There's no doubt we love our community. How green do we wanna go? That's the question. Uh, do these forks, are they, are they really compostable?
Yes.
Forks, all the forks that are sold in Vons and stuff, they just...
No, they, they can be. They can sell compostable.
Okay, so where do, where do we wanna go here? Um, that's where I'm saying, how far do we, how green do we wanna get, because...
If they, if they could show us, probably assuming this place is more extreme, we take the extreme and then we go, oh, well, do we wanna modify that a little bit? Maybe, you know, or maybe we phase certain things in?
Right.
You know, so we have a lot of ways to work that out amongst ourselves.
If I can, I'm, uh, two and a half weeks removed from the city of Calabasas, and, uh, we put in a polystyrene ban and a plastic ban about 10 years ago. And it was difficult at first, 10 years ago, to go into a smart final and find the products that we needed to. It's difficult now not to find those products, um, that aren't recyclable, um, sustainable, so it, it's a lot easier than you might think.
So let me ask, do they, by the smart and final, for example, they still stealth, sell styrofoam if I choose to drink my coffee out of a styrofoam cup at home?
Correct.
Okay. So you don't ban that kind of thing, perhaps? Or maybe you do, just say, I mean, but, so it's not that extreme?
They have styrofoam as an alternative, but, um, I do a fun run for 500, and I've done it for the last 15 years, and there's a, a cup that's replaceable, and it keeps your coffee warm, and there's, there's alternatives to, to all of it.
Right. So how, how severe we want it to be?
You know, it's not, it's not a new idea. I mean, um, so the list of cities that I brought to you guys a few months ago, and this is just coastal towns that I thought are dealing with huge amounts of tourism. So they've already done disposable plastic bag bans, and that's Carmel, Dana Point, Half Moon Bay, Huntington Beach, Laguna Beach, Long Beach, Malibu, Manhattan Beach, Monterey, San Luis Obispo, Santa Barbara and Santa Monica, and the city of Los Angeles. So it's, it's not anything, it's, it's old news now.
Yes.
Mayor, would I, if I may, would I understand also that if we, if that was your direction to pursue, as the council member, um, Cassidy said, that we would involve the Chamber of Commerce to have a dialogue with businesses who would be, um, who would, uh, help us in implementation to get their ideas in regard to, uh, how we shape something that works for us here, using some of the models that have, you know, Lake Tahoe also, South Lake Tahoe adopted a plastic bang, bang, a bag ban. That's hard to say. But, uh, so would that, would that be an inclusive kind of...
Oh, very, very much so, because I, I can imagine some of the businesses being extremely concerned about. So I think a lot of it is going to be education as well?
Right.
And how helpful we can be to, to make the transition if that's the way we go in the future.
What about the 10 cents for a bag? Is that what we're looking at? I mean, where, where does that money go?
Well, that would be part of the consideration of the council in terms of...
That's a lot of money. We go, millions of bags here.
Some people can get, if I'm Vons, I could choose to give you a free bag, or I could charge 10 cents.
Or you could bring your own reusable.
Actually, if the state law, if the state law passes its mandatory 10-cent bag, if you don't bring your own bag in, so you can, you can, you can...
Do you know where that money goes? Is the, is the government saying that you have to pay this 10 cents?
Yes.
It would go to the person who bought the bags, which would be Vons, correct? No, the state takes the money?
I'd like to ask Scott that question.
Right now, as I understand, in most cities, it is kept by the grocery companies to offset the cost of the bags. There are some, and I know some that, that say a portion of it, uh, can go to, um, environmental, um, awareness, but most of the time it goes to cover the cost of the, of the paper bags, 'cause they're more expensive.
Paper bags are more expensive? Okay.
And it doesn't necessarily cost 10 cents, but the state law would say that it, that they have to charge 10 cents, but responsible merchants, as the city attorney said, may decide that they're going to give back in some form to the community. In fact, there are bags that are produced that are about 5 cents. That's, in our research at Tahoe, that's what we found.
That would be nice if we could encourage Vons to maybe do something, um, productive for the community.
I'm sure they would be receptive, yeah.
With that money.
Jim?
Good evening. Jim Luchahan, um, wearing my Chamber of Commerce hat, but also, um, someone who supports green initiatives in our city as a resident. I have moved, like our, our director, from, um, communities that had this ordinance already in force, and in one of those communities, it was a split, 5 cents to the retailer, 5 cents to the local government. And that 5 cents to local government went toward other community recycling programs. Um, I'm, I'm also aware of, um, in that same city, where if someone had the WIC card, they were exempt from the 10, 10-cent fee, and some merchants went so far that if you had your WIC card, you were given a canvas bag, so...
Right. Well, and you know what you find in a, and I, in most, you go to Smart and Finally, you go to Trader Joe's, you go to those places, they sell those bags now for a buck, or that they sell the insulated bags, and so it's become a little industry for them, and we, and then we like to say we were at Trader Joe's.
And also, I, you know, inappropriate to point out any particular business, but I do wanna give credit to Catalina Island Vacation Rentals, that they give every one of their, uh, every one of their guests that come in to rent a home, they give them a reusable bag to use at the grocery store.
Are they biodegradable?
Yes.
You're definitely sure that they're...
Yeah, I have several of them.
And they're biodegradable?
And then you can also look at it not as punitive, you can also look at it as positive. If you bring reusable bags to the grocery store, that's been a situation as well. So you walk in and you have your reusable bags that you carry in your cart all the time, or when you know you're going to Vons, you have your reusable bags, and you get a credit, a token, a credit, and you can donate it to the schools, or you can donate it to the city, or you can donate it to the youth program. So it's not saying punitive, oh my gosh, we can also make a good community thing happen, and that works really well. I know the school I worked at, I mean, we, for four months, we were the recipient of what came from the bags, and we got, you know, $2,600, which in our little town was a big deal. So anyway, I just, there's so many ways to do it, and it's really easy, you guys, it's really easy. I mean, not to put in place, but once people get used to it, it's stunning. I think people are shocked when they come here that we still use plastic bags.
Thank you again, Paula. Okay? So there was direction to...
I, I, I didn't hear a vote, though. Was there, was there a vote? I didn't hear it.
There was no vote, it's direction. It's a direction.
I, well, I, I, okay.
Well, can we, you know, is, can we just show, yeah, like a motion to give direction to staff to develop the...
We'll give staff direction to eliminate single-use plastic bags from the grocery stores and retail stores, and styrofoam and plastic utensils from food, food to go.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. I guess I'll second that. That was a secondary motion, but, okay. Good enough.
Okay, proceed. Do we have to vote, vote, vote?
Yes.
Okay, there we go.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay.
Joe, are you gonna vote?
Um, yeah, I'm gonna vote. I think there's a lot of things we're missing in this. Are we gonna continue to talk about this?
Oh, no, they're writing, just...
This is only the start.
Yes, this is the beginning.
Okay, that's good.
Just beginning.
All ayes.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the City Council acting as the Avalon Municipal Hospital Board.
Number five, we're gonna take any public comment, aren't we?
Oh, I'm sorry. Item number five, the shoreboat service, we have taken off the agenda, but if somebody wanted to comment, they could come up and comment. Mr. West?
Hi again. Um, I don't have any real objection for the city running the shoreboat service, I know they run the bus service and everything else. I do have some concerns, though, and probably my biggest concern is that, looking at the, the initial proposal, that the, after an initial investment, the Harvard Department would have a $250,000 budget. The Island Enterprises, which is currently running the shoreboat, seems to feel that they need over $750,000 to do the same job. That represents a very large difference. Somebody's obviously being unrealistic. And I'm just afraid that if the city does take it over, and they are probably not nearly as unrealistic as, as the Island Enterprises, but if they are unrealistic, where is that additional money going to come from? Initially, for the, the vessels and stuff, it was part of the budget and the tremendous raise in mooring fees. Are we going to continue that cycle ad infinitum, until we finally end up with enough money or no more boaters in the harbor to, to be able to support a shoreboat service?
Your points are well made. I mean, I don't think we're gonna have a big discussion now, but your, your points are very well made.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very, very good points, yeah.
Nate, did you get a copy of the staff report, or have you had an opportunity to read the staff report? Okay, um, it's on the city's website, and a couple of your questions have already been answered in the staff report, but you, you could have a look and, um, and then keep an eye out for when the conversation comes back.
They're just giving mine.
Yeah, yeah, I'll give them mine.
I give you mine, but I have notes all over it.
Any Scott has covered.
All right. Okay, now, any other comments? Okay, now we will go to the Avalon Municipal Hospital Board of Trustees.
I have to work tonight, too. Is this a separate meeting? Is this ready?
We filed them as joint.
We filed them as joint? We don't need a separate meeting agenda for the hospital board. We can just do the appointment.
Right.
So the subject's appointment of two directors to the Avalon Municipal Hos, Avalon Municipal Development Corporation Board, and we have recommendations from the existing board to appoint, I forgot where it is.
Carol Reynolds.
Carol Reynolds and...
Dr. Barton.
Dr. Barton. Thank you. Discussion?
Does, aren't, aren't people, um, that are on this board supposed to be registered voters in Avalon?
That's not a requirement.
That's not, okay.
But Michael is a registered voter.
No, your time's up.
I just walked up here. Um, no, you do not have to be a registered voter. Um, we do like to have board members to be residents, um, but with Dr. Burke Barton, uh, he is the UCI Emergency Room Director here at Avalon, so we think he would be an exceptional addition, even though he doesn't reside here on the island. Um, the last time you appointed board members, there was... The last time you appointed board members, there was a big hullabaloo about not having a doctor on the board, and so now we do have that, so.
For the discussion?
To recommend we appoint two members of the board of directors, the Avalon Medical Development Corporation, with terms ending June 2017.
Perfect.
I'll second it.
End of discussion. Richard's taking it. Call for the vote?
All ayes.
Okay, and, thank you, and now we will be going into closed session.
Nope. I just figured y'all out.
Anyway.
Good night, Tony.
7:30. Good night, Tony.
Good night, Tony.
Appointed two.
Wow, I think this is record timing.